Okay, I call our meeting to order on June 21st. Um, invocation today and the pledge of allegiance will be by Commissioner Barbara Acock.
Can we stand, please? Do I not do the invocation first?
Do the invocation, yes.
Lord, you are the builder of all things. May our board work together for the best of our county. Give our board humanity and respect for one another, make wise decisions. Help us find common ground on our opinions and agenda. Pray for our community, our farmers, and our children, and give us guidance in today's meeting. Amen. Can we say the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I assume you read through the minutes of our June 7th meeting, and I need a motion for approval of the minutes. All right, we have a motion to approve. Any discussion on the motion?
Commissioner Williams.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by roll call vote.
Commissioner Gurley?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wayne Acock?
Yes.
Chairman Joe Daughery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardison?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
All right, and now Mr. Honeycutt, any adjustments of our agenda?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir, we do. We will have an appointment committee appointments, and that will be after special presentations and before unfinished business. And then we'll have a number two under new business, motion to adopt resolution 2223, a resolution regarding an installment financing agreement to finance a portion of the cost of construction of Fremont Elementary School and certain improvements to Wayne Community College and calling a public hearing on July 12th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m. at a special call meeting in the commissioner's meeting room of the Wayne County Courthouse atrium. We'll have that under new business as number two, and then the budget amendments that we did walk on and discuss at our pre-agenda that Allison went over.
Right. All right, so I need a motion to approve the adjusted agenda.
So move.
All right, we've got a motion to approve the agenda. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gurley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wayne Acock?
Yes.
Chairman Joe Daughery?
Yes.
Commissioner Hardison?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
All right, and now under special presentation, Mr. Honeycutt.
First, under special presentations, we have a presentation on the North Carolina Association and County Commissioners Teen Summit attendees by the Wayne County Boys and Girls Club, and we do have team director Ray Trail Caldwell here.
Come speak.
Good seeing you again, sir.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
All right, so I brought some teenagers here, the ones we came, we observed y'all earlier in the month. We end in our program season, but we also start in our program season for the up and coming school year, September might as well say. So these are potential officers for our leadership group at the Boys and Girls Club for our Keystone Program, and like I said, they just here to observe and see how county commissioner board is ran. We are looking forward to going to the county commissioner summit in Concord, North Carolina coming up in August, so just to give them a hit a star because they'll be playing the role of y'all there on that Saturday. So they're just coming to, you know, introduce themselves and, you know, tell them what they're here for.
All right, Matthew Burden.
How does it?
You tell them your school. Oh, cuz of high school.
Your ambition?
You said what?
Tell them your ambition.
My what?
Your ambition, what you look to get out of this.
Oh, yeah, like, basically like, I don't really know how to put it, but basically just trying to like, see how like, y'all operate and like, see what my like, my plans in life.
Yeah, man, where do you live at?
Oh, I live in Goldsboro.
What part of Goldsboro?
Uh...
You don't want to tell me? It's all right.
Yeah, about Wilster.
Okay, all right.
Chris? Um, I'm Chris McKinney. I go to Goldsboro High School. I like the boat top. I like the boat.
Chris was our youth of the year at the Boys and Girls Club, so he got a chance to go up against other youth of the years at other Boys and Girls Club from different counties. So he made it to the second round as a freshman. Usually the youth of the year comes, usually be a junior or senior because they've been through a lot, been through more, and so Chris is getting a hit a star. He didn't win, but he took on a lot of experience, whatever, and he's looking to, you know, come back next year to apply for the youth of the year again.
Great. Good job.
Are you a Chris McKinney junior or?
Yes, sir.
So your dad's Chris McKinney?
Yes, sir.
I ran track with your dad at ECU. He actually came to the meeting. Okay, yeah. Maya Monk?
I'm Maya Monk. I go to Charles B. Acock.
Let them know what you plan on doing after you graduate.
Um, not really sure what I want to do yet, but so far I've been taking health science classes and...
Eleven hundred grade?
Oh, I'm going to be a junior.
Okay, congratulations.
I am Tyler Stenbeck, and I live in Pikeville, and I go to Wayne Prep Academy, and what I want to do when I graduate high school and college is what I want to work for Norfolk Southern Railways.
Okay, good job. All right.
You're pretty definite about that, too.
My name is Diala Middleton, and I go to Grand Central High School.
All right, good morning.
So, yeah, once again, we just grooming our young teenagers, our young youth, and let them know what it is to be leaders and what it takes. So hopefully next year at this time, you know, you get more out of them, they get more vocal and, you know, stuff to that nature or whatever. So we just gonna sit back and enjoy the show. We'd love to take a group picture with y'all at the end, and we'll, you know, give y'all feedback as we go on through the school year when we start up again.
Great.
Well, we appreciate what you're doing.
Appreciate it, thank y'all.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
And thank you for, I mean, this is our future right here. I mean, with the right leadership and the right mentors, this is our leadership. I mean, and thank you for what you're doing, taking the time to be with them and show them the right path.
Oh, yeah, I do appreciate it. It's fun, and, you know, if I could, you should see them off camera, they probably... You know, you get more words out of them than a little bit, so.
But you don't get a word in edgewise, do you?
No, yeah, they speak for me sometimes.
Well, great, thanks so much for being here.
You want to take a picture now?
We want to take a photo now?
Yeah.
Okay.
That may make it easier.
Stick around with photos.
See, I was asking your address because I was trying to see if you were in my district. You're looking, bud.
We're gonna put y'all in front, we're gonna get a picture in the back here on the back of the road. As tall as you are, you're cutting me off.
All right.
Might have to stand on the chair.
Yeah, I'm not standing on the chair in here. If I can get y'all just a little bit tighter here, I'm nude all this. All right, perfect, couple pictures. All right, one, two, three. All right, Coach Richard, you got a whole bunch of them.
Okay, stay right there, pull a look, because once Dave sits down, y'all will be able to get a picture. So just look up at those cameras, smile, one, two, three, there you go.
Everybody will smile.
All right, thanks again, appreciate it, too.
Y'all representing a smile when y'all go to the conference.
I know.
They did.
You're a Beatles guy.
Somebody's music came on.
That was not my fault, because I was like, oh, I had cut off. I just added a little music.
And our next item, we have a special presentation by Wayne County Chamber of Commerce President Scott Satterfield.
Good morning.
Good morning. Commissioners, how are y'all? Thank you so much for the chance to be here with you today. It's a special occasion for us. We would like to offer a resolution, a resolution honoring Craig Honeycutt for his years of service to Wayne County and also to the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce. Whereas Wayne County, North Carolina is a wonderful place to live, work, and play. And whereas, since 2017, our county has been through challenges such as hurricanes and a global pandemic. And whereas, through all of those challenges, Wayne County has not just survived, but thrived with noteworthy economic, social, and community development. And whereas, this progress in security has been the result of a substantial leadership contribution of Craig Honeycutt as manager of our county. And whereas, because his leadership has been marked with integrity, collaboration, and servitude to his staff, elected leaders, and community members. And whereas, the Board of Directors and the 619 members of the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce want to publicly thank Mr. Honeycutt for his service and character and wish him the very best in his future endeavors. Now, be it therefore resolved by the Wayne County Board of Commissioners and on behalf of the Wayne County Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, that June 21st, 2022 will be Craig Honeycutt Day in Wayne County. And how about that? And the Board of Commissioners invites every citizen to thank Mr. Honeycutt for his dedication to our community, given this day the 21st day of June 2022.
You didn't bring best of the moon.
I didn't bring best of the moon. I will say it's rigged, and...
You made the cut in my heart.
Thank you very much, that's a very nice honor. I appreciate it.
All right, the next item on the agenda is the...
We actually need a motion to adopt.
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right.
So move.
We have a motion on the floor that we adopt that. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by roll call vote.
Commissioner Gurley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wayne Acock, how do you vote?
Let me think about this a minute.
Yes.
Chairman Daughery? Commissioner Freeman Hardison, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Antonio Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
I appreciate it, it's a nice one.
The next item on the agenda is the appointment committee.
Mr. Chair, the appointment committee is responsible for appointing the chairman of the ABC Board. Under directive, AC Board asked us to make a recommendation, and we have the consensus that we're unpaid, be that chairman.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by roll call vote.
Commissioner Gurley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wayne Acock, how do you vote?
Let me think about this a minute.
Yes.
Chairman Daughery? Commissioner Freeman Hardison, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Antonio Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
I appreciate it, it's a nice one.
The next item on the agenda is the appointment committee.
Mr. Chair, the appointment committee is responsible for appointing the chairman of the ABC Board. Under directive, AC Board asked us to make a recommendation, and we have the consensus that we're unpaid, be that chairman.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes, in the form of a motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by roll call vote.
Commissioner Gurley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wayne Acock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chairman Joe Daughery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman Hardison, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Antonio Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
That is unanimous.
All right, Mr. Honeycutt, under unfinished business.
Next, under unfinished business, number one, discussion and possible approval of the purchase of the Grantham Rescue Facility. And you have a copy of the site plan, you have a copy of the D. This is something we've been working on for a while, so if the board, we need, if the board wants to finalize the purchase or not, so.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we finalize the purchase of the Grantham Rescue Building.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
As I had stated earlier, I don't think this is a good plan. No disrespect to the Grantham community or the former Grantham Rescue Squad. I can see their point in wanting to transfer this property over to the county, but I think, and I'm not looking at the needs right now, I'm looking at the needs of the future. And like I say, no disrespect to the Grantham community, but I was elected to try to make the right decisions for the county, and I don't think this is a right decision with concerning the property lines and the size of the building and the age of the building. I will say that as long as I am involved in making decisions for the county, that we'll always have a rescue squad or rescue building at Grantham, but I just don't think that it's the best interest of the county to move forward with purchasing this piece of property when we ought to. The county already owns a property that a building could be owned. I'm not saying that we don't need to continue to use this building for a while until we can make a decision. I think that we need to continue to use it if we have the blessings of the Grantham community and pay them rent, just like we do the other communities that we're renting buildings from. But at this time, Mr. Chairman, I cannot vote for this, I just don't think it's a good plan for the county.
Okay, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I concur with everything that Wayne just said. Being in the emergency services, we've kind of been through this before, and my main, a lot of my main concern is the future expansion of the Grantham Fire Department and, because I've actually been through it on a personal level with Belfast, so I would not be able to support this as well.
All right, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I noticed Commissioner Acock mentioned something about renting the building for a short time until we can get some cost on this building. Like Wayne said, I was a former EMS, and I've seen concerns in other buildings and stuff, and I know everyone else knows more about building and cost than I do, but right now I do have some reservations on it until we can kind of get some further information and just rent the building until we can make a final decision on it.
All right, any other discussion?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. County Manager, but we do rent the building right now, don't we?
Yes, we did pay a small fee. We did, I think it was about 12. I can't remember. Do you remember? It's not a lot, but there is a small.
And we've been doing that for years, right?
I think we just started paying recently, but we...
We were supposed to have paid.
Yes.
And that bike rent that we owed them, I think was reflected in the sales price that they gave us.
It may have been, yes, sir.
Yeah, so I don't see any other information that we need to gather myself. If we're talking about building a building, we're talking about over $400,000, you know, and on a plot that is wet already, it was gonna have to be, have dirt hauled into it. So I'm not in favor of building another $400,000 building now or in the near future.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, this will be a roll call vote?
180,000.
Would you modify your motion to include purchase price?
Yes, sir. Again, just FYI, that is budgeted in this year's budget using ARP funds.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of Grantham Rescue Facility for $189,000.
Eighty.
$180,000, I'm sorry.
Yeah, 180.
That's my fee, Craig.
All right, Commissioner Gurley, go ahead.
Did we ever, did we ever come up with a total approximate cost of renovations with roof and other parts of the building to add to that? I mean, far as someone knows exactly about what it's gonna cost?
Yeah, correct me if I'm wrong, Kendall gave us an estimate of $50,000 on the renovation, and then on the roof, he was saying a couple thousand for our coating, but he's not sure because he has not been able to see the underside of the metal roof. So there may be some additional cost reflective in regards to once he can get up to see the roof, if there's any additional leaks.
Did he have any idea of how much the roof would be if he had to put a new roof on it?
He is here now, I will ask him. If we had to put a new metal roof on there, what kind of cost we're talking about, approximately? Hold on just a minute, he's coming to the microphone.
Okay, thank you.
While he's coming, I do want to let you know that when we budgeted for this, we budgeted anticipating some renovations would need to be done, so we have a total of $467,050 budgeted.
How much?
$467,50. So that would pay for the purchase price of the building and renovations, assuming the renovations wouldn't exceed that.
I think you exceeded our budget.
I can do it for that.
Oh, I imagine you could.
These were, these were based on early estimates, you know, which is what gets submitted to CIP.
If we had to replace the metal roof on this building?
I'd guess them up at probably $50,000, $60,000 probably, because metal's just high right now, probably in that ballpark, because it's a large building, a large building, but probably in the, I would guess at the 50, 60 grand.
Is that labor?
Yeah, we would have, we would pay somebody to do that, we would have to hire that.
So that's still be way under course of building a new facility?
Yes, sir.
If you've got, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You've got 400, what, thousand?
$467,050.
And that was set aside as part of the ARPA funds, and again, not knowing what we marinate up, so if we don't spend that, that will just roll back into our ARPA funds, whatever's not spent.
Okay. What would that, 400 and some thousand, and we're talking about an old building? Do we know how far 400 and some thousand dollars would go on a newer facility that would fit the needs for the county for 30 years?
All right, Commissioner Gurley, did you have some additional questions?
Wayne just pretty much said what I was gonna say, I mean, we're already at 300,000 for that, but anyway, let's go ahead and vote, and it is what it is.
All right, any more discussion? All right, we're gonna go ahead and vote, and that'll be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gurley, how do you vote?
No.
Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock, how do you vote?
Right now, no.
Commissioner Wayne Acock, how do you vote?
No.
Chairman Joe Daughery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman Hardison, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Antonio Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Chairman, that vote passes by a vote of four to three.
Let's move on. Consent agenda, I need a motion on approval of a consent agenda.
With the added...
With the added budget amendments.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we accept a consent agenda with the added budget amendments.
Break the mask.
All right, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by roll call vote.
Commissioner Gurley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wayne Acock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chairman Joe Daughery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman Hardison, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Antonio Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
That'll be unanimous.
And Mr. Honeycutt, under new business?
Under new business, discussion and possible approval of MOU with Wayne County Development Alliance for a pad-ready site constructed at Park East. As the board is aware, we received a grant from the North Carolina Southwest at our last meeting for approximately $230,000. That is to go to product development, and the thought process was to put that into a pad-ready site over at Park East on property that the county owns. There recently, WCDAs has been working with Jackson Builders to do a pad-ready site there now. The thought process is Jackson Builders are mobilized, and it may be cheaper at this point to go ahead and to do an addendum to the contract with WCDAs, contract with Jackson Builders, to go ahead and move forward and do a pad-ready site while they're there. The costs, we're working on costs now, we will come back to you with the final cost. There is some concern about exactly, some farming issues and some exactly what site it is, but it would all be contingent upon making sure that those issues were clear before we move forward.
Okay. And does anyone like to make a motion on that?
So move.
Well, thank you. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the memorandum of understandable Wayne County Development Alliance for a pad-ready site and the construction in Park East, contingent upon the details being worked out by legal staff.
Yes, sir.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gurley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Acock, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wayne Acock, how do you vote?
No.
Chairman Joe Daughery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman Hardison, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Antonio Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
Motion passed, six to one.
All right, our next item, Mr. Honeycutt, is?
Motion to adopt resolution 2022-23, a resolution regarding an installment financing agreement to finance a portion of the cost of construction of Fremont Elementary School and certain improvements to Wayne Community College and calling a public hearing on July 12th, 2022 at 9:00 a.m., a special call meeting in the commissioner's room at the Wayne County Courthouse atrium. And again, at our last meeting, as the boards are aware, we have a special call meeting, we approved of a guaranteed maximum price for Fremont Elementary, it's about $37 million. We did receive grant funding from the lottery commission to fund part of that, but we are gonna have to go out and borrow approximately $12 million to complete the project. And the thought process was, we have committed $3 million also to Wayne Community College with respect to their new building on campus. So we needed to go out, and since interest rates are rising, we wanted to go ahead and get an interest rate locked in as quickly as possible. I do want to thank the work that Allison and Davenport have done to get us to this point. It's really gonna save us money moving forward, but this is the first step to get to the local government commission for that approval, so again, so we can get that locked in rate.
One correction, you said we were having to borrow an additional 12 million, it's actually 15.
Yes, sir, thank you.
So 15 million?
So you can take, because it's so rushed, you're not sure you can give all the notice of you need, that you need to get it done quickly.
Well, we are rushing this through as quickly as possible, the, uh, news media is reporting to expect a three-quarter of a percent increase each month between now and December. So, uh, each month that we wait is an additional three-quarter of a percent cost to financing. So, uh, hats off to our finance department and to Davenport, uh, good choice on our part because they're, uh, had such a, uh, a relationship with the LGC that they could get this on the, the August agenda. So, um, we'll do our part to make sure we have it all there.
And it probably would be better to have the public hearing starting at nine fifteen.
Nine fifteen.
About nine o'clock on the twelve.
Okay. All right, with that in mind, I need a motion to approve, uh, this financing agreement.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, discussion. Any discussion? Hearing none, this will be a roll call vote.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Gurley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Akok, how do you vote?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Wayne Akok, how do you vote?
Yes.
Chairman Joe Dottery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman Hardison, how do you vote?
Yes.
And Commissioner Antonio Williams, how do you vote?
Yes.
That would be unanimous, sir.
All right. Now, county managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank, uh, the board for the, and the chamber for the resolution, that was a very nice, um, honor, and, um, um, June twenty-first will always be a special day, as Craig.
Which is the day before my birthday, so you remember it from now on.
I remember your birthday, uh, always, but, um, I did, you know, this is my final meeting, uh, as county manager, um, and, and I've got some words I'll say at a later date, so, so I'm still here till the thirtieth, so I'm still here till the thirtieth, still working hard. I only took five phone calls from the chairman yesterday, so, um, uh, but I, I do want to make sure that, um, one of the things I think we have done over the past six months, I think this board and should be really proud of, and I think appreciate Commissioner Williams' leadership on this, is we have our interns on board. And, um, so you'll see a lot of young people across the county now, uh, that we're going to, uh, introduce them, and, but they started today, uh, so they'll be working, uh, for the next six weeks. It really is a great program, uh, we have done a lot of work on this internship program, and Commissioner Williams has, and Ms. Pierce has, and Ginger, uh, our whole HR staff has, so, uh, just a lot of thanks to them for that. Uh, but this is a start, and hopefully, uh, we can do some things right and build off on it for next year, uh, but we really did a lot, a young man's job getting everything together, uh, to try to have a program this summer, and, uh, I do want to have our, our two interns, and I apologize, I forgot your names, uh, I met them five minutes before I came in.
And Ms. Pierce is here too.
Oh, Ms. Pierce, yes, so if, if y'all would please come up and kind of introduce yourself, tell us where you're from, uh, what high school, so.
I'm Krizma Barber, and, uh, I go to Wayne Early Middle College High School, I live kind of around the Mount Olive area.
My name is Michaela Cobb, I go to Southern Wayne High School, and I live in Grantham.
A pleasure, we're glad to have y'all, we're glad you're participating.
And these are the two that'll be on the fourth floor, so that you'll see when you come in, and, and we'll have them for the next six weeks, so, um, uh, but you'll see interns all throughout the county as well, so, uh, we're, we're very, I appreciate Ms. Pierce and, and the work that she's done as well.
And Ms. Pierce, would you like to give us some, some update on, on the program? Please do.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So we actually had seventy applicants from high school level, um, and we interviewed sixty of them, and we have actually orientated twenty-eight, and we had fourteen post-secondary, and we had fourteen applicants, but we only interviewed ten of those, and we have five of them, and those five started, yes, one of the young men from Public Affairs was here earlier, I don't know, I guess he stepped out, but that is, in fact, we should at this moment have thirty-three students throughout the county in different roles working, and they are all just amazing, and I'm excited to work with them, and we thank you guys for this opportunity, for them and for the community, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, what are some of the criterias that you were looking for in the students when you?
Well, mainly when we interviewed, I was just hoping to see if they could actually communicate well enough to interact with adults, we weren't expecting them to have any work experience, because that was what the program was about to gauge and give them that opportunity. Uh, so when we interviewed, mostly I was looking for how well they conducted themselves, um, their professional dress, and then, like I said, could they actually have a conversation, um, with an adult that I wouldn't have supervisors and managers going, who did you send me? So, and all of them are capable of doing an amazing job, so I'm excited.
Ms. Pierce, how many postgraduate students did you say?
Five, yes, ma'am. Oh, I mean, applied fourteen.
Fourteen applied?
Yes.
And that's not included in the seventy, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mm-hmm, yeah, the seventy was high school only.
Well, and I don't think people really recognize what was accomplished in a matter of about three months, which generally takes most counties a year, and that is to actually have the program, the inception, draw up the guidelines, get you hired, and then you screen all of these and actually have, uh, have them at, on the job today, I mean, that's just amazing, uh, so hats off to.
Thank you.
I have one, one question for you, out of everything, what would you say is the number one problem you solve with our kids that apply?
I would.
That they could work on in the future.
I would suggest that in the future, since we know that we're going to do it, that we actually have some pre-training, like how to interview, how to come in and approach, so I would say that was the only issue is just so that those that don't know, because unfortunately, some students do not, didn't know, um, and because we could only select thirty, um, they weren't selected, I mean, of course, if we could get more positions would also be great, because I think training and learning would help any of them.
So it's awesome.
I have a strong feeling that Commissioner Williams will be pushing for additional.
Well, I sat in some of the interviews with Ms. Pierce, and, I mean, I was amazed at some of the young people that we have here in this community, I mean, some of the kids are really sharp and smart, and they just need an opportunity, and I thank this board for giving them an opportunity, um, you know, my, my, my biggest regret was that we only could, uh, hire a few kids, but next year, I'm hoping that the board will support it even more, and I'm hoping that the departments here would support it as well, um, thank, but I thank everyone that was involved, our city manager, our assistant city manager, this, this board, and the departments as well, and Ms. Pierce, thank you for, you know, what you've done, we really appreciate it.
Thank you guys for trusting me with, with this, so thank you.
Yes, yes. Mr. Ray Cox.
Ms. Pierce and I have crossed paths before. But I want to thank you, uh, for, for taking this project on, as I said earlier, with the groups on the back row back there, this is our future. I mean, you know, we, you look up, look at people, we're about, some of us are about done, what we can do for the, for the county now, but, but really, this, this is our future, and any, and any help that you can give them, or both of these groups, uh, you know, it's, it means a lot for y'all to step up and, and take responsibility to, to help lead and guide these young people to, to the future.
So we're going to do our very best, but thank you guys.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, young lady.
That's all I have for this time, thank you.
Today, we're, we're going to do things just a little bit differently, and that is, we're going to go out of order, um, in regards to board commissioner reports. I want to start out by saying that Craig Honeycutt did what many professionals in the professional world would, would never do. He chose to step down from being a county manager to becoming an assistant county manager here in Wayne County. Now think about that for a minute, he was a county manager, and he stepped down in order to take a position here in Wayne County. That's the, that's commitment. That gave him one year under manager George Wood. It allowed him to work with George on many of the projects that were going on at that time, and prepared him to work with this board on even more projects. Since Craig began with the county, the following great things, tragic things, and trying things have happened. The completion of the John Bell probation and parole bill. The completion of the Joe Gurley Emergency Management Service building. The completion of Meadow Lane Edgewood Development School. Five new EMS stations. The sale of the Lot Eight Shell Building. The sale of the Busman Building. Pay studies across the county to reduce compression and increase the retention of our employees. Jet port expansion to the tune of over five million dollars investment. The Maxwell Center opened. He took over seeking a new hotel for the Maxwell Center, and he succeeded. Construction of the Deacon Jones Automotive Building at Wayne Community College. A new DSS Health Department building and jail expansion were begun. New department managers who have become great leaders for our county have been hired, all while dealing with the death of three beloved and respected commissioners in one year. He dealt with COVID and hurricanes Florence and Dorian. Craig, we wish you well, and we hope you'll come back for this. Thank you for making Wayne County home.
Thank you.
Now with that in mind, I want the commissioners to join me down for, for a group vote, as I present this plaque. Wayne County, North Carolina, presented to Craig Honeycutt, county manager, January of two thousand and eighteen to June two thousand and twenty-two. In special recognition for your public service and commitment to the citizens and staff of Wayne County. Your leadership through challenging times has pushed us to go further, and the improvements made have undoubtedly made Wayne County a better place to call home. The Wayne County Board of Commissioners sincerely thanks you for your diligent service to this county and wishes you the best for the future. We'll let you go.
Right in the middle of that.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Now you get to stand in the middle right there. There we go, we're going to take a picture.
Three, two, one, I should get a text, this guy.
Got it. Now we're going to have board of commissioners, uh, committee reports, and we're going to hear from Commissioner Gurley first.
I apologize this morning for not being able to be there, uh, Craig, I appreciate your leadership, uh, I realize you've lost a little bit of hair over the past year and a half because of me, and I apologize, um, but I do appreciate your friendship and, uh, leadership of Wayne County. As again, I apologize for not being there, I had to, uh, bring one of my daughters to a daughter's appointment, and I can attest that, um, Brooklyn Boulevard is not as bad as we think it is, by travel I afforded you this morning. So, um, that being said, I got to go into a doctor's appointment with her, y'all have a good day.
All right, thanks so much. Commissioner Foster.
Not really so much a comment, I just, uh, on, uh, on the, in our report where it says commissioners, it says commissioners committee reports, it used to say commissioner committee reports and comments, and I was just wondering why that changed in August of twenty-twenty, you know, I mean, and if so, I would like it to go back to saying reports and comments, because I think a lot of us have comments, and then we also have committee reports too, so, just something that, I just saw, saw that difference in August of twenty-twenty, if that can be looked at, I don't know if it was voted on or anything, but if not, looking at putting that back in.
Okay, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Barbara Akok.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, uh, like you and Commissioner Gurley, we went to an excellent meeting last night called Broken Pieces by Mark Colbrook. The meeting was very enlightening, we learned a whole lot last night about our school safeties, bullying, and things that we need to make improvements on, there's a lot of issues out there that I was not even aware of, and hopefully, we can come to a consensus on how to, uh, maybe fix some of these issues, um, the school board was there, and I appreciate that, they brought up a lot, a lot of good suggestions, and I think we also learned some things that we didn't know that it was, was occurring in our schools. So I want to, uh, extend, um, my appreciation for being invited to this meeting, and hopefully they continue, and I will try my best to be at these meetings, and some of the rest of commissioners, if you can, I think you will find it very fruitful to learn some of the things that was expressed last night. Our kids, like we've said today, are very important, they're our futures, and we need to do everything we can to make this transition to adulthood for our children as easy as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Williams.
Yes, sir, thank you, sir. Okay, so I got an opportunity, this board allowed me to go attend in Raleigh, the North Carolina Assembly Day, county commissioners', um, event, and I learned we have increased, uh, in school public safety, um, in their budget, um, they approved medical marijuana was passed, uh, Medicaid expansion was passed as well, um, bond transparency bill also was passed by the House and State Committees, um, AARP assistance for county government also will be free, we'll have, they'll have strategic members to come and help out, uh, counties, also, um, there's a strategic member service for opioids, um, for those funds that we're getting. Um, I actually had the opportunity also to attend the Juneteenth, uh, downtown celebration, I want to thank KT and Curtis Media, um, the City of Goldsboro staff as well, all the vendors and the entertainers, um, the community as well, because it was a very peaceful, um, turnout, our community needs more, more events such as that. I also want to thank again, uh, Summer Youth, um, Employment Coordinator, Ms. Pierce, as well as all the departments that have supported having young people working in their departments, thank you. We know these young people are safe for the few hours they are working, it was my hope that we could have hired many more, hopefully, we will in the future. Lastly, the senseless shootings, um, I challenge, I challenge everyone in our community, um, to do something about it, I challenge our young people sitting here today, um, to think before you react, if someone, you know, makes you feel uncomfortable, if you feel like they violated you, or they disrespected, disrespected you in any way, think about something before you react, um, I had an uncle that passed, and it's, same as James Darden, and he used to tell me when I was a kid, Antonio, remember the three Cs, and I'm like, the three Cs, he says, yeah, stay cool, calm, and collected, so, I want y'all to remember that before you react, before you think about picking up a gun, you know, think about what could happen. somebody, that's corny. That's corny, you killing somebody. That's, that's not a lie. You not, you know, let's change it up, all right? Thank y'all for listening to me. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner.
Mr. Chair.
Okay. Vice Chair.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, I would first of all like to thank Ms. Pierce and Mr. Caldwell for what you're doing, and the others that's helping our youth. Because this, as Commissioner Williams just said, they're living in challenging times, challenges that we as children did not face. It's a mixed up time, and, but I have to face that our young people with the right leadership that they're getting from y'all and from others. I just pray and wish that our parents to, a lot of our youth would step up and start taking care of their children like our parents took care of us. But again, thank y'all. Also, I've been out of town for a few days, and Commissioner Gurley was talking about the congestion on I 40 a while ago. I saw a $5.90 gas this past week. So, you know, our $4 and some gas gallons, they don't, they don't look all that bad. But, again, we got to job to make the right decisions for the county. We don't always have to agree. We have differences of opinions. But when we walk out of this room, we all going to still, still be friends. And lastly, I owe our county manager a cheap cigar. He says an expensive cigar, but we're going to compromise on that too. He pulled something off, and I told him he wouldn't pull off, and so the bet was a cigar, so I owe him. Build a great cigar, maybe. But thank you, thank you, Craig, for what you have done for us. It has been challenging. But, you know, and look, me and Craig can always agree dealing now, but we've always worked it out in, for the best for the county. But again, thank you for what you've done for Wayne County.
Yes.
That's it.
Thank you. I do want to remind everyone that our July 5th meeting has been canceled, so we will not be meeting right after the 4th of July. Wanted to say my comments to a fellow that we've had some intense fellowship on. You know, the thing about Craig, if you get to, get to know Craig, he's really kind of laid back, you know? And I've really ribbed him about that. I have. I told him that he needed to be a little bit more forceful, you know? And, but somehow or another, you always found consensus. And that is Craig Honeycutt. He always found some way to bring the parties that were maybe at different odds, bring them together. And that's been refreshing. Not necessarily how I would handle things, as I've told you in the past, but he's done a tremendous job for our county. Five and how many years? Five and a half? Five and a half years. We will miss you. We are having a farewell, the secret's out. We are having a farewell reception for him at the Maxwell Center, and it is from, help me out here, four o'clock to seven o'clock. So floating reception at the Maxwell Center on the 28th, on the 28th. So I encourage everyone to come out and say a farewell to our county manager. Thank you. Job well done.
One more quick thing.
Sure.
I didn't mention a while ago, he's been here, what, five and a half years, been through some things. But I have found him someone in Burlington that he can go visit every once in a while that will remind him of Wayne County. He knows where it's at and who she is, but he can, he's got someone he can contact in Alamance County to remind him of Wayne County.
Okay. Anything further, any comments? If not, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Come on.
And we are going into closed session for the purpose of?
Discussing the business in the county.
Discussing what?
A business.
Discussing a business in the county and to discuss with our attorney.
Personnel.
Personnel.
Yeah. To consider qualifications and performance of employees.
There we go. Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Is Mr. Gurley still with us?
I don't, I think he went off.
Yeah, I'm here.
Oh, you're still there?
He is still there. So, all right. This will be a roll call vote.
All right. Commissioner Gurley, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Foster, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Akok, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayne Akok, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner, or Chairman Joe Daughery, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman Hardison?
Yes.
And Commissioner Antonio Williams?
Yes.
Two men, sir.
All right. We're in closed session. Thank you for coming today. Okay, we are out of closed session. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we're back out of closed session, and I think we have a motion.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the removal of the restrictive covenants from Hark East, Lot Number 18.
All restrictive covenants? Okay. All right. We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
All right. Commissioner Gurley, how do you vote?
I was just going to ask, was that just for that one?
Lot. Yes. Yes. Just the one lot.
Okay. Commissioner Foster?
Yes.
Commissioner Barbara Akok?
Yes.
Commissioner Wayne Akok?
Yes.
Chairman Joe Daughery?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman Hardison?
Yes.
Commissioner Antonio Williams?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chairman, the vote was unanimous.
All right. Is there anything else to come before our meeting today? All right. We are recessing our meeting until 9:00 a.m. June 12th.
July.
Well, July the 12th. It says June 12th is already coming on. Thanks for the correction. All right. July the 12th at 9:00 a.m. I will see you then.
And happy birthday tomorrow.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.